Hey, good afternoon and welcome to coping with COVID updates on the pandemic and information to help you thrive and survive COVID-19. Hey, don't forget, we are going to move coping with COVID to my professional page, Taylor Made Productions. So please make sure you like and follow that page so that you can watch the show on the Taylor Made Production page and get all of your COVID-related updates. Today on coping with COVID, we've got this beautiful lady right here. And we're gonna talk to, yes, thank you. We're gonna talk to her about the Richland County plan for COVID-19. We of course talked to Councilwoman Shakies Newton a couple of weeks ago, and she told us some things. But Attorney Myers is gonna tell us some more things about Richland County and about the upcoming election. We're gonna get to her in just a short, short, but first, here are your COVID community updates. Don't forget that COVID testing is going on throughout the state, so many places, so much to choose from, mobile testing, drive-through testing. Go to scdhac.gov or prismahealth.com to find out all of the testing sites. Now, when you get there, you'll get a mask. They do have Spanish-speaking interpreters onsite, so there's no reason to get tested. I will tell you today, there are several places throughout the state. Until 3:00 today, you can get a free COVID test in Jasper at the Beaufort Health Department, also in Dorchester at Family Healthcare, also in Berkeley County at Fuller Healthcare, and in Orangeburg County at the county building. Now, until 4:00 today, you can get tested in Greenville at the Healthcare Coalition, in Ori County at Tide Water Health, and also in Florence at MUSC. Now, in Sumter, they're doing testing until 5:00 today at the Sandhills Medical Foundation. Again, go to scdhac.gov or prismahealth.org to find out where all of the testing sites are located. Now, if you would like to organize a COVID testing event in your community, you can do that, too. Go to acc/testing@dhac.gov, or you can call 803-673-6110 from 9:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m. 803-673-6110, if you are interested in sponsoring a COVID event testing in your community or neighborhood. Don't forget about the June 9th primary in Columbia, but primaries are going on throughout the state, throughout the country as a matter of fact. Now, here in Columbia, you can go to 2020 Hampton Street to vote early. I voted earlier this week, didn't take me but 30 minutes, and they're open from 8:30 to 5:00. Google the area and the place where you live where you can early vote. Whether you early vote or wait till June 9th, make sure you find out where your polling place is. Many of the polling places have changed due to COVID-19, so make sure you know where you're going so that you can get there and definitely vote. I'm Trey Taylor. You're watching coping with COVID, and Dahlia Myers is joining us today. She is a Richland County Councilwoman, and I just cannot believe it's been four years. That is crazy to me. When we were talking, you said it's been four years, because I was like, hasn't it been two years?
It's been four, Trey, four long years.
But you've done an amazing job. Yeah, you've done an amazing job in that community, and I know that's your home. I mean, you're from there, your mom and daddy church there.
There you go, my mom now.
So that's good. We'll talk more about your, because you, this is an election year, you are up for reelection. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. But first, I want to know about what Richland County is doing. As I said in the opening, Shakies came on a couple of weeks ago and told us about the amazing program that the county has implemented for small businesses. How is that going?
So it's going really well. On Tuesday night, the council was privileged to approve its first round of funding, a total of almost $300,000
Wow.
in small business and nonprofit grants. I was really excited because on the list, there were a lot of beauty and barber shops since.
Oh, that's good.
It was great. Yeah, I mean, we've been making the push to tell people that, you know, they're important to us, that we want them as small businesses to come on in, because, you know, people, you see all the big money going to these big corporations, but they're only 5% of America's economy.
Right.
If that other 95% crumbles, we're in bad shape. So the Richland County grants for small businesses are up to $10,000, and they're meant to cover rent and payroll for people who, you know, may have had some loss due to COVID-19. I mean, we've shut everything, so clearly folks have to have some way of paying their bills, because we want them to reopen when we go robust and reopen.
Absolutely. That is so good, because in the first round of a lot of the programs, a lot of the small businesses were left out. We all know that a lot of big businesses got, you know, the lion share of that money, and there were the small mom and pops that, you know, were not able to be funded. So that's great news. Now, how long is that program gonna go on? Are there, is there still money available?
Yep, we're, we've done our first two rounds. We're gonna do another round. We're expecting at least four rounds, and if there's more money, we'll go till we run out of money.
Good.
And if it needs to be replenished, and we think there's a way to do that, obviously without busting the budget, or without creating a deficit for the county, we will, because we understand how important this is.
Yeah, it is important. Now, if people do want to apply for these, and they're forgivable loans, right?
They are forgive, well, it's a grant.
It's a grant, okay.
It's a grant.
Which means they don't have to pay it back.
I'm pretty happy about that. That means you do not have to pay it back.
That's great.
You're not trying to, you know, set businesses up for a double whammy.
Yeah. So again, let us know what the qualifications are and what people need to do.
So if you're a Richland County business, so 65% of the grants are for businesses in unincorporated Richland County. That means spaces outside of the city or incorporated municipalities. But then there's 35%, because those municipalities all are in Richland County. So it's 35% that goes to incorporated areas in Richland County. So everybody has a shot. The reason that that structure exists is because, of course, the city of Columbia has its own program. And to the extent that you have to be incorporated in the city of Columbia to be eligible, in fact, those folks have two shots, whereas people outside of the city only have one. So we wanted to make sure that we gave them a clean shot at getting funding through COVID. So to be eligible, you have to be registered in Richland County as a company, a business, or a nonprofit, and you have to have to experience some loss from COVID-19. That's almost everybody, right?
Yes, yes.
And you have to be able to demonstrate that you have some rental payments that have gone unpaid, or and a payroll and/or a payroll that has gone unpaid. You can be a sole proprietor, you can be a law firm, you can be a barber shop, you can be a beauty shop, you can be a nail spa, you can be a day spa, you can be any kind of business in Richland County, and we want everybody to apply. And to apply, you just go to www.richlandcountysc.gov, and then hit our COVID-19 relief.
Okay, richlandcountysc.gov, and go to the COVID-19, and then they'll see the information about applying for those, those grants, you said.
That's exactly right. And for folks who've applied for grants through Richland County before, they might be familiar with Zoom Grants, which is the platform that we run our applications on.
Right.
Z-O-O-M Grants, and they can go to Zoom Grants as well and apply.
Okay, now, if, and it's up to $10,000, right? Is that what you said?
$10,000, for the small business and for the nonprofit. It can be more than that, depending on what you're applying for.
Right. What type of qualifying paperwork do people need?
So we have asked them to present their business license. Of course, they're, you know, IRS certification if they're a 501(c)(3), so they would need to be able to present that, a tax ID.
Okay.
A lease or something else to demonstrate what they've been paying, payroll receipts, just something to quantify your loss. And that's sort of, sort of, it's meant to be real easy. It's not meant to have you jumping through 5,000 hoops to get to it, because we want to make sure that it doesn't take us six months to get you money to keep you open for three months until we reopen in three months.
Yeah, yeah.
It's meant to be a low bar.
All right, we're talking to Attorney Dahlia Myers with the Richland County Council, and she is telling us about this amazing program, a grant program that is available for Richland County small businesses. So again, go to richlandcountysc.gov, and there's a COVID tab on there, and they can hit that and get the information about the grants, right?
That's right.
Right. Tell us, tell us. No, go ahead. No, 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 you go ahead. No, you go ahead.
I just wanted to remind folks that with their businesses, they don't have to be fancy schmancy businesses.
Okay.
You know, you might, you might run a small barbecue shop, right? You might run a little sandwich shop. You might have a food truck. Those are all businesses, and they contribute to the robust life of Richland County. So, you know, trace someone even like yourself with your, with your business, you know, we have all types of businesses to apply, because we want to be sure that we keep this county going.
That's so good to know, because even you just mentioned a food truck, you know, a little barbecue shack, something like that. That's a business, and that is what a lot of people have been relying on, you know, to make ends meet. So I think that is so very good that those types of businesses are being recognized, you know, doesn't have to be a brick and mortar building, a brick and mortar company. That's good stuff.
No, I mean, it could be, you could, you could have your small business that legitimately runs out of a home office. We don't care. I mean, that's not what we're certifying. We're looking for your business license registration, of course, with Richland County, and for receipts that tell us what your loss has been, so you can quantify it. That's really what we're looking for.
Right, so richlandcountysc.gov. Is that what it is? Yeah. All right, so what other COVID-related information can you share with us as far as the county is concerned?
So the county is, as most people know, kind of in a hybrid state, right? We're open and closed, right? So we have our employees coming to work. We haven't stopped people coming to work, but we have cut the traffic into the building, because until we put certain protocols in place, it's not really safe for people to be in the building, given that COVID-19 numbers in our state are going in the wrong direction. And I know we don't like to talk about that, and I know some people see this as more political than medical. I don't. I see it as an epidemiological problem. It is a problem of medicine.
Yeah.
And I want our people, our community, the minority community, to pay special attention, because we have been especially hit hard with this virus. And a lot of us are dying. I mean, if you consider that in a given year, of the people who get the flu, somewhere between 5% and 20%, so 5% on the low end, 5% of them die on the low end, and in a bad year, a bad flu year, a bad flu year, 20% of the people die. Well, the COVID-19 morbidity rate is a standard 15%. That's more people this year in South Carolina, more people have died in the last two months from COVID-19 than have died in the whole year from car wrecks. And if we have this many people already having died from a car accident in South Carolina, at this point in the year, over 500 people, we'd all be saying, folks, wear your seatbelt, slow down.
Right.
Right? The cops will be out in big numbers, giving more and more tickets. But for whatever reasons, we're not taking this seriously. We're thinking that a 15% morbidity rate is, is okay, and we can live with that, and we ought to be moving towards herd immunity. But to get to herd immunity, 85% to 90% of the people have to have had it, and I don't think that's what we want.
Right.
The death rate would be so sky high, right? It'd be frightening.
Yeah, you know, I'm so glad you mentioned that, because, and we were talking about this before we came on the air, that I think because, particularly here in South Carolina, because so much is opened back up, we are thinking in our minds, business as usual. And I didn't see a lot of people wearing masks before, and I sure don't see, I see even less people wearing masks now. And, you know, you see people not social distancing. I just don't think we're taking it seriously, and I'm concerned about that.
I'm alarmed, too. I told you before we went live that I went to get gas, and I had on my mask, which is my handy-dandy mask that I carry everywhere and I wear. I am not ashamed of a mask.
Me either.
And they didn't have on a mask in the grocery store, so I had on my mask, and I was talking to them like this, like this. And the lady said to me, you know, I'm not worried about COVID-19, because I got Jesus, and he's gonna protect me. And well, my first response to her was, you know, well, does he protect you from cancer? I mean, do you not take, you know, precautions? Does he protect you from overeating, from smoking, from drinking? I mean, there are things that we do to protect ourselves, and with COVID-19, this is a small ask. Put on a mask.
Put on a mask.
That's all you have to do. Put on a mask, use hand sanitizer, wash your hands.
Yeah.
Stay six feet away from peoples. It's, you know, physically distance yourself so that you can protect yourself and those you love. I don't think that's too much to ask.
Right, and, and, and our numbers are going up. The numbers are going up, and there can, not only are the numbers going up, here's the other thing, the African-American community has the highest number of fatalities, not only in South Carolina, everywhere. So that means we are even more at risk. And it's just blows my mind that people are not getting it, and people are just not taking it seriously. Maxine says, people aren't thinking about even testing now, you know?
No, and I don't know why.
They're free, it's free.
She had it.
Oh, my goodness.
Why would you wanna know? Because then you could protect others and yourself.
Exactly.
So we've got, in South Carolina, you know, 518 deaths in two months. If you consider the things that we do after a mass shooting, right? We might have a mass shooting, 10 people get killed in a day, right? And then we will change the protocols for getting into all the schools.
Right, right.
Change the protocol for what, what kids are taught to do in the school. And, and a mass shooter, even on a best, on their best day, couldn't kill as many folks as COVID-19, and we want to go around with our daily routines as normal. I'm not equating the two, because certainly they're not the same. But I am saying that we have been, in some ways, desensitized to the threat, because there are people who, for political reasons, don't want us to take it seriously. And, and I'm just trying to urge us to take politics out of it and protect our lives.
Yeah, and that's the thing. Even if you, for some reason, don't care about yourself, then, but this is such a contagious disease, think about your children, think about, think about the elderly people in your, in your family. Do it for someone else. Do it for someone else. I mean, that's why you even wear the mask. The mask is for someone else, that someone else is protected, not even you. You know, so I think it's so unselfish.
I laughingly tell people all the time, I got my mom and dad wrapped in bubble wrap, right? Because, yeah, because I don't want anything to happen to them.
Exactly.
So if we think of it that way, you know, I come in the house and I spray Lysol, take off things, and throw them in the wash, you know, that I've worn somewhere, and I even stay six feet away from my own mom if I've been out, to give, you know, to make sure that if there's something going on, I get some warning before I've harmed her, right? To, to make sure that I haven't done damage that's irreparable, because we don't have a cure.
Right.
And we don't have any way to, you know, vaccinate people from getting it. So we have to be careful.
Exactly. Bianca Sharday Richardson says, where can we get tested now? Hey, Bianca, thank you so much for joining us. I actually mentioned that at the top of the show. This is what I suggest you do, beautiful. Go to prismahealth.org or scdhac.gov. There you can find a list of all of the testing sites. I actually, at the top of the show, mentioned every place throughout the state that was testing today. As a matter of fact, let me look back on my, because I'm not sure if there was any place in Columbia. I think the closest place today that I had on the list was Orangeburg, and that was till 3:00. They're testing at the county building, and in Sumter, at Sandhills Medical Facility, that's at 5:00, and Florence at MUSC till 3:00. But go to scdhac.gov or prismahealth.org, and there you can find the list of the daily testing. They've got drive-through testing, they've got mobile testing, there are community testing. And you know what else, Bianca? If you would like to organize a COVID-19 test in your area, call 803-673-6110. That's the information that I gave at the top of the show. So check that out and watch the replay so that you can get that information. Thank you so much for watching. I appreciate it. Go ahead.
Just, just in harmony with, with what you were saying, Trey, also just be on the lookout, you guys, Richland County, in our sort of plan to get things back on track, or not, we're not gonna say back to normal, but to get things, to, to live in a post-COVID world. We are also looking at possibilities for standing up more testing across Richland County. And we announced, I think, last week, a partnership with Prisma that would allow our experts, right, for how we should be getting this COVID stuff right, and how we should be managing our workforce, what we should be recommending to small businesses and big businesses across the county, individuals who might be going to parks and rec or something. So we're looking to see if there's a way that we can recommend guidance. We know we can't make people do anything, but we can give them the best information that we've got, and allow them to make an informed, intelligent decision.
Absolutely, and that's what this show is about. Every Monday through Saturday at 2:00, you know, updates on the pandemic and information to help you thrive and survive, just to give you the information, us, and particularly in our community, the information we need, because we've gotta get serious about it. We already have the underlying conditions. I mean, it's prominent in our communities. So we have the health disparity. So when anything hits, we're gonna hit, get hit harder, you know?
That's right.
Yeah. So people can go to the Richland County website and, and find out that information?
Well, so we are fortunate to have what I call him, our fearless new administrator, and he's leading the charge to put together some guidance for us. He is, with his staff, developing proposals to be given to county council, and we'll vote on those proposals, and come up with what we think we ought to be recommending to the Richland County public, so the public at large, to include, of course, all, all aspects of it. So the, the team is working on it now. We've been given a draft. Prisma's looked at our draft, and we are making comments on the draft, so that we get, you know, as much included as we can, and then we will promulgate some guidance, and, and let everybody know what, what we think they ought to be doing. I commend the city of Columbia for having gone through a process whereby the Richland County, City of Columbia Fire Station rates businesses as COVID careful or prepared, right? That tells you that a business is doing things to keep you safe when you go inside. I think that's wise.
Yes.
And I think we ought to all, you know, take that on as an example. People often like to sort of shy away from doing anything countywide, as opposed to letting folks in the city do things. And I think that we get this notion that people in rural communities don't want to be told what to do, and they don't, but no Americans want to be told what to do. People are freedom. I mean, that's sort of the American way. But what is important here is, I think that the public is clamoring for guidance. They're clamoring for help, because this is new for everybody.
And leadership.
There you go. There you go. And I must say, the difference, and I, I, people ask me about the, the leadership style of Richland County versus the city of Columbia, and I won't, I don't, I don't, I take no position on, on the style per se, but I do wish that people understood the different forms of government, because Richland County doesn't have a mayor.
Right.
Right, we have a chair of our council, but the function of the chair is not to act as a mayor.
Right.
The function of our council chair is to make sure that the meeting agenda gets set, and that we move through our meetings. In Richland County, we have 11 council members who all share equal power. And to the extent that the mayor in the city of, of Columbia sets an agenda that is voted on by the council, right, and, and council feeds into it, that's very different. We don't have a, a mayor. We have 11 independent-minded people who all come to this with different goals and objectives. Consider, Trey, I represent a district that is over 360 square miles. It is larger than every other district combined. Just geographically, just getting from the tip of, right, Pontiac at the Kershaw line all the way back down to Eastover, it's impossible to do in a day. I can't traverse my district in a day. I'm sorry for the phone.
That's okay.
I can't traverse my district in a day. But there are people who can walk their district, walk their district in three or four hours. And so comparing the needs of those two different sets, there's just no comparison. I have parts of my district, one of the things that I've been excessively proud of during my tenure has been, so most people think that I represent Hopkins, Gadsden, and Eastover. I love Hopkins, Gadsden. I was born in Hopkins, I now live in Gadsden. I love those areas, but I represent, that's fully a third of my district.
Wow.
So my district includes, you know, Fort Jackson, Wood Creek Farms, it includes Blue Cross out on Polo Road.
Wow.
Right, it includes the Peach Grove community, it includes a part of Percival Road, it includes part of Clemson Road. It is humongous. It includes parts of Olympia and parts of Casey, all of Arthurtown, Little Camden, Bluff Estates, Eastway Park, Starlight.
Wow, that is a large area.
It's humongous. So when we say, what is good for my district, Dahlia Myers' district, I'm always thinking, whoa, okay, where are we in my district, right? And what, where are those people's needs? So one of the things, as I started this by saying, that I'm most proud of is, there was this trailer park on Percival Road that had been abandoned almost 30 years. Over 150 trailers, Trey.
Wow.
Guess what was living in them? Coyotes, snakes, rats, roaches.
That's a horror out there.
Okay, E-I-E-I-O. Guess what it abuts? Drexel Lakes and the Woodlands community. And so you got this trailer park with 150 abandoned, rotted trailers, with some asbestos just falling down, and they're building houses all around it. Well, I am extremely proud of the fact that, along with the Richland County staff, we found half a million dollars in federal money to tear those trailers down, move them out, and get it, you know, remediated for asbestos as, as best we could. Now, I drove over there, the month that those trailers were coming down, I think I drove over there every morning on my lunch break and every night, because the people in that area had come to me so desperate to just stop having rats and snakes crawling to their neighborhood.
Wow.
From that, that, you know, things like that. Well, that is not an issue in Eastover.
Yeah.
It was a big issue on Percival Road.
Right, right.
Water and sewer, those aren't issues on Clemson Road.
Yeah.
They're humongous issues in, in parts of Hopkins and parts of Gadsden and Eastover.
Right.
You know, some days I'm schizophrenic, but I love, it's, it's been probably one of the best jobs I've ever had, because it allows me to use every skill and talent I have ever had to amass, right? Everything that I've ever had to learn, I've had to put into play to do a good job at Richland County. I haven't always been successful, but I've worked hard every day at it.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned it, because I wanted to bring up, you know, your time on council. I want to say, Melissa Jenkins, thank you for watching. She says she's so glad that you're on the show. She said, your service is a great contribution to our community. Melissa Jenkins.
Thank you. Thank you so much. That's.
Yeah. You're watching COVID with COVID.
Black girls got six-year-old little black girl.
That's right, that's right. You're watching COVID with COVID. I'm Trey Taylor. Dahlia Myers, Attorney Dahlia Myers with the Richland County Council is talking, talking to us today. We've been talking about the COVID-related information that we need to hear from Richland County, and now we're talking about the fact that it is election time, as I mentioned at the top of the show, and you are up for reelection. And that is a huge, that's a huge area, Dahlia. I, I don't think I knew that that's such a huge area, and you're right, what the needs are in one section, as you said, Gaston Hopkins would not be what it would be Polo Road, Clemson Road area. So what do you think has been one of your biggest accomplishments these last four years, which, again, I'm just, it's blown my mind that it's been four years, because the time has flown. Maybe not for you.
It's, it's definitely been a challenging four years. I, I was, in some ways, probably underprepared for the environment that I walked into. I, it's been a different environment than what I expected or believed it would be. In some ways, that's good, and in some ways, that's bad. I mean, my whole background has been corporate. I was very used to a corporate environment where, you know, it was collaborative, and people liked to talk ideas out. They liked to hear how we could service clients and share the best ideas. They liked you saying, well, have you thought about this, or have you thought about that? And I didn't realize that in politics, that's seen as criticism. It's not seen as collaboration. It's seen as sort of you saying that I'm not, I don't have it all right. And I also learned very quickly that, at least in the areas that I represent, there is a pretty entrenched old guard that does not share power. They want to be in charge, and if you're unwilling... And if you're unwilling not to collaborate, but to be controlled, you, they, they're going, they will come for you. I mean, you, you have to be real careful. And I learned that the hard way. Um, but what my, among the things that I'm most proud of, um, when I came into office, one of the things that I knew was going to be difficult coming in was figuring out how to rationalize what was going on in the lower Richland community in particular areas with water and sewer, because we had three schools with, um, the fancy way to describe them is sewer lagoons. The honest way to describe them is an open pond where human waste flows.
Wow.
Uncovered and not well-treated. So it creates at the bottom this sludge that DEHEC has said is toxic. And for years, DEHEC had been fining Richland One, therefore, you know, the county, because we fund the schools, um, have been fining them and demanding, demanding that there be some fix, um, for that system. And it had just ripped the community in two. And it, it started out with people mandating that everybody was going to get on it. It was going to, the tap was going to cost you four thousand dollars. We were going to have twenty-six lift stations, some of them on private property. You couldn't tell people not to be on it. It's just, it was kooky, right? It was rocky. When I ran, I promised folks that I would work on smart sewer.
Right.
Smart water. And so the first, I guess, day I got to Richland County, well, this is a funny story. First day I got there, I said, oh, hello, I'm Delia Myers. Where's my office? Thinking I was going to go and get to work, because that's how I'd always worked. And the clerk looked at me and said, um, ma'am? I said, well, I was just elected. I thought she didn't know who I was. I'm really excited. I start, you know, immediately, where can I go so that I can, you know, get going? She said, oh, there are no offices. Well, in my naivety, right? I went to the administrator and I said, is it normal? Because the administrator that we had then had more than twenty years' experience in local government as an administrator.
Right.
And I had no experience, right, as, um, as a, um, councilperson.
Right, right, because you're an attorney.
As a lawyer, I knew that I had, there you go. As a lawyer, I'd advise council members and, you know, and so I thought, well, let me go to the person that can advise me. And so I went to the administrator and said, is it standard practice that there are no offices? Where am I supposed to keep confidential documents, right? Where am I supposed to study? What, how, how does this work? And he laughed. And he said, well, typically, there are offices, but there aren't any in Richland County. And I stupidly, right, Trey, this is what you do when you do. I stupidly said, can we get offices? I didn't think it was a controversial request.
I would have asked.
There you go. Chip Jackson came in and asked the same question. And so Yvonne McBride came in, asked the same question. So we thought it was pretty, a pretty normal question. Man, you'd have thought I asked somebody to bring the Lindbergh baby that I had taken into hiding out. It was just, it was, it was just crazy. And people started saying that I was making outrageous, ostentatious demands. And just, you know, and here comes this woman making the administrator do something. And she must be, uh, uh, he must be enamored of her. You know how it goes. Because black women are the only women, right, in the world who, when they're successful and smart and hardworking. They can't be successful and smart.
Right.
They have to be, you know, getting things done the wrong way. So there was that, and it was, that was difficult for me. And many of the men then, um, some of them still in council, um, began, you know, you know how they do the little, um, whisper campaign against you. They started that, but the administrator was focused and he did get offices and I was very excited. And so I started reading and I read every shred of paper about what was the existing plan for sewer and how it was supposed to, um, get done. And I went to the administrator and I said, have you ever built sewer before? I haven't, you know? So my background, interestingly enough, I have built infrastructure, but not sewer. You probably know this. My background is that I, you know, I'm from South Carolina. Clearly, I went to school here. Am a proud South Carolinian, a proud Hopkynson. And, um, went to Spelman for undergraduate and came back home and taught English, um, taught literature to high school students. We, our, our church then had a school, Central Carolina Christian Academy, which taught many wonderful students. Um, and I taught there for three years, um, and then went to a little town in Panama called Chitray and sold potatoes for a couple, three months, came back and went to law school. Girl, I was a terrible potato salesperson.
Oh, wow. Everybody can't do everything.
Everybody was making money every day. My little brothers had a rip Roy trade, though. One of them was selling plantains and he was pretty good. Um, but I went to, um, law school at Howard. And immediately after law school, I clerked for the chief judge at the Court of Appeals in Washington. And after my.
Let me ask you something. So did you go to law school because you weren't a good potato salesperson?
Let me tell you something.
Right, did you decide, oh, I can't do potatoes. Let me go to law school.
Now, you know, my brother is an outstanding salesman. He can sell anything. I can't sell nothing. Do you hear me? If I gotta sell it to make money. So yeah, I probably went to law school because I knew, I knew I'd stay in my lane.
Go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just thought about that.
That's okay, that's okay. Um, so yeah, but I went to law school and then I'm a chief, I clerked for the chief judge at the Court of Appeals, um, which definitely was outstanding training for just analytical thought. I mean, and the volume of reading that I did there is commensurate with what we do at Richland County. I mean, I read, I must have read with the, with Chief Judge Wagner Chambers, we must have read between six hundred and a thousand pages a week. And that is not unusual at Richland County. And so you learn techniques to read and, and, and dissect large quantities of varied information. Um, and then, so I, I went to law school and then got, accepted, got a job at a law firm. Um, because the chief told me I had to start practicing law. I was like, I like this job. And she said, it's time for you to go practice law.
Right.
Three months after I was in that job, the partner with whom I was working in the telecommunications practice group came in and said, we need an associate to go to Hong Kong and assist, and associate to go to Brussels for three months to do telecommunications deregulation work. We think you'd be great in Hong Kong. Trey, I fell out laughing. I said, no, ma'am. I just got here. I don't know anything. I don't know anybody. Um, and I don't think that's what I should be doing. And I just laughed. She walked out of my office. I closed my office door. My secretary, who was a Brown University graduate, really brilliant woman, whom I love and respect. She taught me, um, how to manage corporate life. But she looked at me, she said, you need to call your mom. And you need to think that through, because that's probably not a good decision. So I called my mom, thinking my mom was going to say, that's too far. My mom said.
Girl, you better go to Hong Kong.
What are you, the local idiot?
Right, yeah.
She said, you're going to Hong Kong.
Yeah.
So I said, I'm going to think about it. She decided that there was no way that I was not going to Hong Kong.
That's right.
So she and my dad, huh?
That's a great opportunity.
Oh, my God, it was a greater opportunity than I ever knew. She packed my bags. She and my dad flew to DC the next week because I was gone. I literally left the next week. I never even thought about Hong Kong. I packed one suitcase with all the wrong clothes. It was a tropical environment. It was so hot in Hong Kong. I mean, I wanted to strip to walk. Um, but we packed my bags and, um, I left. And I did telecommunications infrastructure work. So that is building internet and, uh, networks across the world. And making sure that little children who might not be in school in monsoon season could access the internet, right, and keep doing work. And people out in remote areas could go to their doctors using telemedicine. Because at that point, I was working across Asia. So Hong Kong, Singapore, Indonesia, mainland China, everywhere where there was a major Asian capital, we were building networks. I was then with MCI. And, um, I came back home after having done that for seven years. I, we were very successful. We connected, um, seventeen networks during my time in Asia. And you now are able to call mainland China for a few cents, partly because of me. We built undersea cables and connected the United States to, uh, to other parts of the world. So I came back home and, um, took a job at a law firm and began to see that we had some of the same problems, right? Connectivity issues, you know, what happens in a rural area where, you know, some senior citizen might not be able to drive forty minutes to Richland Memorial.
Right.
Um, and so when we started working on this, I started talking to people about it. And I noticed the intersection between the sewer work that I had done, right? And the telecommunications work, because it's all infrastructure. If what is in the ground is not right, the stuff above the ground doesn't matter almost.
Right, right.
What's in the ground drives everything. So, you know, I analogize access to water, sewer, and internet as literally the railroad, electric grid, and telephone system of our time. If you're lacking one of those, one of those three things, you're not in the modern era. You know, we used the railroad long ago to transport goods before we were flying them everywhere. But we still use rail spurs for a large business, right? Because that's how we transport things. You have to have the electric grid or you can't have, right, proper, um, buildings and, and facilities. And certainly we have to have telecommunications. A, a big subset of telecommunications now is internet. And if you don't have internet access, it's just like not having a telephone or electricity. I consider sewer to be quite similar. I mean, nobody's using chamber pots anymore. Nobody's using outhouses anymore. Um, so we need, we need this modern infrastructure. So when I started on the project with Richland County, um, interestingly enough, I thought people would understand that what I was looking for was to build choice into the system and to build freedom into the system. But there remain, even now, a group of, I would say, probably about ten percent of the community who think that one shovel in the ground in Hopkins or Gadsden or Eastover, allowing for those schools to be fixed just ruins the community. Um, and so that has been a struggle, but I'm proud of what we've done. We built, um, the, the plan for a system that doesn't require anybody to get on. If you don't want it, you don't have to have it. Now, you do have to maintain what you've got, because now DEHEC is different from Richland County. If your stuff is poisoned in the ground, DEHEC is going to fine you and make you do.
Right, right, right.
So you, you can, you can get on it if you want. If it passes by your house, it's not going down every street in Hopkins, Gadsden, and Eastover. It's going down the streets that are interconnected with those schools. Somebody called me this morning from Changang Road and said, they told me that you're going to force me to pay four thousand dollars to get on this system. I said, sir, I am not that powerful. You know, first of all, if you were on the path, it would be free for you to get on the system.
Right.
But secondly, you're just not on the path. So you can't even get it if you want it. I'm sorry. Five hundred of your neighbors and friends have signed up because they want it. Um, and that, that puts a lot to the notion that nobody wants it when five hundred people more than have signed up, um, to get on. And what I'm excited about with this system, Trey, is it's also going to provide a hundred sixteen new fire hydrants.
Oh, that's great.
For places that don't have fire suppression.
Right.
Now, what we're doing is using somebody's pond to put out your house if it catches on fire. There's no pond near you. The fire truck might not be able to get back. Gets them apart, which is crazy.
Yeah.
So on the path, we will have a hundred sixteen new fire hydrants. And I'm telling you, I am so excited about those fire hydrants that it's almost Christmas for me every time I see one.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Proud of that project.
Yeah. Uh, Charles Smith says, uh, County Councilwoman Myers is a caring, effective, and beautiful politician, saying they can't all be like her. She says, uh, God bless you, Councilwoman. We are talking to, and we are talking to, uh, Richland County Councilwoman, Attorney Delia Myers. She is up for reelection. We've been talking a little bit earlier about the plans, the COVID plans for Richland County. Now, we're talking about, uh, the upcoming election. So Delia, um, if and when you are reelected, what are some of the things that you want to work on for the next couple of years?
So, um, I, one of the things that we have done that's just, I consider it to be just revolutionarily helpful for this area is, you know, many years ago, Richland County built a huge deep water well. Huge. It's by Hopkins, um, Middle School. And it draws water from the underground aquifer, which goes further than anybody's well in the community. I mean, that's, it's thousands of feet down. Most wells, if you've got a hundred-foot well, you've done well. You've done better than most.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, but this one goes thousands of feet into the ground. And it was built for Franklin Park because they had, um, bad, a bad water system. And they had that bad lagoon where all the water was contaminated and, you know, they were nervous about it. But when I first got on the council and people were very concerned about Westinghouse and is Westinghouse poisoning my well? And is the water that I'm drinking safe? Well, my thought was, how many people can that deep water well service? And so I went back to the same old administrator and said to him, how many people can be serviced by that well that Richland County has in Hopkins? Because it's already there. We're serving six hundred and seventy customers on it. He said, it could serve probably up to ten thousand. I almost fell off my chair. I said, up to ten thousand? He said, we think so. So I said, can you tell me how many you, you're sure it could service? Because if people are nervous about their private wells and Richland County owns a first-class well that pulls water from the water table in the middle of the earth, rather than the, the normal wells that we're all used to, why wouldn't we make that available?
Right.
To people who needed it.
Yeah.
And so they came back and said that, that we could, that we could serve up to ten thousand people. So I said, what is the cost differential in running water lines parallel to the sewer? And then they laughed at me and they said, nobody runs water and sewer lines parallel. You have to run them on separate sides of the road because if you have a sewer main break and a water main.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And they're in the same place, you got a problem. That's contamination.
Yeah, definitely.
They said they'd have to run them on separate sides of the road. You know, I said, well, what's that, what would the cost be incrementally? Would it be reasonable? And they came back and ran the numbers and said that it would be. So we started over. So before I came on council, there was a plan for sewer, but we started fresh. Um, because I wanted the community to know that we'd taken a fresh look at it, that we were going to do water and sewer and that it was going to be a project that met their needs. No tap fees, zero. Not, not lower, not incremental, not added to your, that was one of the requirements. It fixed all three schools mandatory. And it fixed Franklin Park, which still had that lagoon in the back of it where their, their waste went. So, you know, that wastewater just flowing onto the, to the lagoon and getting, you know, into all of our stuff. My dad still complains about turtles crawling out of the, the Gadsden Lagoon into his pond, but.
Wow.
So we, we decided, and then I got more ambitious and I thought, well, when I lived in Singapore, I came up with an idea so Singaporean children could walk out into the street and use this thing that looks like a telephone, put in one sing penny and be on the internet and talking to anybody in the world. Why can't we get our kids on the internet? And so I started working on that too. I thought.
That's a big issue in South Carolina, is that broadband issue. Yeah.
Well, I'm going to tell you that what I'm proud of about this project is, while we're putting these lines down, we are burying cable for internet.
That's great.
And I'm excited. And I know, you know, there's been a lot of concern. People have thought that I was, you know, you know how it goes. So she's grandstanding, she won't be everything and everything. No, I just want to get it done. So if there are people who got money and they want to throw it in the hole while it's open.
Yeah.
Because it costs millions of dollars to open the ground, like, you know, between ten and eighteen million dollars just to dig the road. So while it's open, it's the smartest thing in the world to do, to put every piece of infrastructure in it that you want. My colleagues saw the wisdom of that. And even before, we had, we're probably ninety-five percent of the way down the road of, of, of a public announcement about a provider, a service provider. But we had to give them some time to do some things that they needed to do on their end. So my colleagues approved Richland County investing the money to go ahead and bury the cable rather than waiting five years for somebody else to do it or waiting even to get the COVID money. We hope we get some of it. But if the road is open today and you miss the opportunity, you've added again to the cost.
Right.
So my colleagues saw the wisdom of allowing us to bury cable as a, a cable conduit as we go along. So we're doing that right now. And I could not be more excited. So this time next year, if. So this time next year, if kids are at home, kids in Gadsden, in Hopkins, in Eastover, they won't be using those little packets unless they want to. They'll be able to access high-speed internet. And they may be in Zoom classes, just like the kids, you know, at Heathwood Hall or Brennan or some of the other schools who stayed in school the whole time. And I think that's amazing. I'm excited about it. Really proud of it. I'd like to see that project through. So that's my main goal.
Okay.
Getting reelected and getting rid of about four more of those trailer parks, Trey.
Right. So um, Dahlia, as I mentioned earlier, some of the polling places are changing due to COVID. I know they're um, consolidating some. Are there any polling places that are gonna change in your district?
Yes, so chief among them, and this will be um, important for people to to know. I'm 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 making calls about it now to try to let folks know. If you live in Gadsden or in Eastover, in the Crossroads area, the Gadsden polling facility this time will be Weber School in Eastover.
Hmm.
Crossroads will be Weber School in Eastover. Everybody will be funneled to Weber School in Eastover. And even the 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 um, folks who, and people have said to me, well, is there any place in Gadsden? No, no, there isn't, because.
Wow.
The issue is not that we're ignoring people or um, you know, making light of where they live. It's it's just that we don't have enough people working the polls. And I'd like to remind people, Richland County is not in charge of the polls. Richland County Election Commission is. And that commission is appointed by the legislative delegation, not the council.
Right.
We take instruction from them, just like everybody else. We approve their budget, but we don't control them.
Gotcha.
I want my folks in Gadsden to know that they gotta go somewhere else to vote.
Okay, so those two places in particular.
Gadsden and Crossroads, gotta go to Eastover, Weber School. Everybody knows where Weber School is.
Dahlia Myers is uh, joining us on coping with COVID. I'm Trey Taylor. Uh, give us the e- email address again, um, or the website again for Richland County Dahlia, so that people can, one, find out about the loans, the grants, the 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 free money, I'll say, grants up to $10,000 that small businesses can get through uh, the the county loan program. I won't say loan program, through the county COVID funding program and all other COVID updates that our people can find out about.
W W W dot Richland County S C dot org. W W W dot Richland County S C dot, sorry, dot gov. I said dot org, it's dot gov.
Okay.
Dot gov, Richland County S C dot gov. And we want y'all to apply. Please get this money.
Yeah, so.
That vote was 10 to 1, and the one was in abstention, not because he didn't want to vote for it, but because he thought that his businesses might be applying. So he didn't want to have a conflict. So everybody wants y'all to apply.
Richland County S C dot gov. Go to the website, uh, and they can find out where it says, it says COVID-19.
COVID.
It says COVID.
It'll direct you.
Okay.
And if you can't get to the Richland County website, you can apply on Zoom, Z O O M Grants.
Okay, Zoom Grants.
ZoomGrants.org. Not Zoom, the website where everybody's meeting up and.
Right.
Having meetings, but ZoomGrants.
Right, ZoomGrants. So wh- when you're at that Richland County website, not only can you find out the information about the loans, but everything COVID-related concerning the county, correct?
It's absolutely right. Um, I like to remind people that you can go to the website to get information. You can go to the website to pay bills. We've waived a lot of fees right now, because we want people, yeah, we want people to be safe and we want them to be able to pay um, bills. I paid my car taxes online. Um, I didn't realize I hadn't hadn't paid my, I paid my car taxes online last week, Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, I got my bill.
Online and it was easy.
Yeah, yeah, I got my bill sitting around here somewhere, girl. I need to go ahead and take it.
Look, somebody let me know before I knew, because you know, they're researching your life history.
Right.
Shoe size and everything else, because they want to find any bad reason for people.
Oh, yeah, it'll be, Dahlia Myers didn't pay her car taxes, isn't it? Yeah, that'll be it.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
And if people want.
And that's the reason why I can't get things, that's the reason why I can't get good uh, good ideas through.
Well, your phone's ringing off the hook, girl, so you're doing something right. If people want more information about you, how they can contact you uh, as far as county council, as far as your uh, your professional life, you're a lawyer in real life. How can they contact you?
I'm a lawyer in my real life.
So how can people contact you?
I would love to speak to any of my constituents at any time about anything. My Richland County phone number is eight zero three nine zero eight three seven four seven eight zero three nine zero eight three seven four seven. And certainly.
Now, I was gonna tell you to tell you, tell your brother to put that number in the chat. Tell him, tell your brother, because I know your brother's watching. Tell him to uh, put that number in the comments. Yeah, to put that in the comment.
Got it. He'll do it. And certainly, um, you are welcome to call anytime if you're my constituent or if you just can't figure out who your councilperson is. I'm the vice chair of the council and I would love to direct you to the right person. Um, it is such an honor to serve in Richland County. It's difficult some days, um, because there's this um, overriding um, philosophy that in Richland County, you it did, uh, everything is just off the rails. But I'm proud of a lot of the work that we're doing. I'm proud of many of my colleagues' um, work. And it is an honor um, to serve my family, um, my friends, my church family, my extended family. So I'm very proud of Richland County and the the direction in which we're going.
Thank you, Dahlia, so much for joining us on coping with COVID. The rest of you, thank you so much. Please post and share this broadcast to spread this important message to the masses. Don't forget, so you, you can also follow me. Don't forget, go to Tailor Made Productions. We're moving this show to the Tailor Made Productions page. Please make sure you like and follow that on Facebook, also on Instagram. Thank you, Ted, for uh, putting the number there. Please make sure you do that, so that you can get all of the COVID-related updates and watch coping with COVID on the Tailor Made Productions page. Now, if you have a COVID-related product or service, please inbox me on the Tailor Made Productions page or you can email uh, thetailormadeproductions@gmail.com and we can talk about how you can sponsor perhaps coping with COVID. If you have got a message, a COVID-related message, we'd love to hear from you, too, so that you can inspire and uplift someone. Please, again, inbox me at the Tailor Made Productions page. Dahlia, I usually leave with a reading from Jesus Calling. Um, should I read or do you, would you like to uh, show us your preacher kid?
Don't take much of me to come up with a scripture. Let me tell you the one I've been meditating on today.
Please, yes, yes.
In quiet and confidence shall be your strength.
Wow, I love that.
And so.
And quiet and confidence will be your strength.
Shall be your strength.
So what what scripture is that? Where is that from?
Well, you know, Trey, I don't know. Let me tell you. It's in my little heart. You've not been in church for my whole life. I don't tell people how old I am, because they won't believe it. Um, but I'm gonna tell you in a second.
Okay.
In quiet and confidence shall be your strength is from Isaiah 30 15.
All right.
Would you like me to read um, the whole of it?
Yes, I would love for you to, please. Come on.
There you go. Okay, so for thus saith the Lord God, the Holy One of Israel, in returning and rest shall ye be saved. In quietness and in confidence shall be your strength. For thus saith the Lord Jehovah, the Holy One of Israel, in returning and in rest shall ye be saved. In quietness and in confidence shall be your strength.
And quietness and in confidence. Yeah, you can be quiet and confident.